Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's go with the meeting in order. Okay, hello, great buddy. This evening, I'm just gonna go through the rules of the meeting before we get star surveys on the same page and how we're gonna proceed this evening. Good evening, this is the regularly scheduled April 11th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, Chairman of the Commission. It shows it's on. Maybe I'm not speaking well enough. Try to speak up. Tonight, for the benefit of those audience, I am joined by Rebecca Holman, Michael Slifka, John Mead, City Attorney Scott Pitson, Duty Director David DeGroot, City Planner Mike Bucy, and Assistant Planner Jesse Muntzey. Planning and Zoning Commission meetings air live on Geneva Broadcast Network, which can be viewed on Comcast Channel 10, ATT U-verse Channel 99, Metro Net Channel 93, or the city's YouTube channel. This evening, the Committee will host a public hearing on Items 5A and 5B. As Chairman of tonight's meeting, I will guide the public applicants and commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined in the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. The Commission will open the public hearing, and the applicant will provide an opening statement and a brief overview of their requests. Commission members will have first opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by public comment and testimony regarding the requests. Audience members will be called on and given an opportunity to comment. When you come forward, please state your name, when is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made and your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. Remind members of the public to refrain from bearing off-topic or direct comments that are relevant, and direct comments that are relevant to the requests being considered. As a friendly reminder, the Commission is making recommendations for variations, zoning map amendments, special use permits, and shall set forth specific findings of fact, as we do every meeting, that's how we do it, on relevant standards defined on the city, by the city's zoning ordinance. Copies of the standards have been made available tonight's meeting for public review. I believe they're over by the site up sheet. Following the end of the public testimony, the applicant will have opportunity to comprehensively answer the questions and respond to any comments made from members of the public. Additional questions or comments may then be stated by the Commission. The public hearing may then be closed, followed by Commission deliberation on separate requests. Any person speaking during the public hearing agreed to understand that anything they say was considered sworn testimony and affirmed to tell the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth, so you've been sworn in. In order to help the quality of the meeting broadcast, I remind at all commissioners to mute themselves except when they are addressing the Commissioner. Commissioners are encouraged to state their name prior to speaking, and a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers, for example, Stocking, yea, nay, or sustain. So that's how we're gonna proceed this evening. Any questions? Hearing none? Anna, please call the roll.
Mead.
Mead here.
Evans.
Slifka.
Slifka here.
Holloman.
Holloman here.
Mataskill.
Moran.
Stocking.
Stocking. Okay, next item is approval of agenda for this evening. Move to approve the agenda, Slifka?
Second, Mead.
Moved and seconded in home favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next item is approval of minutes of the March 28, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission. Move to approve the minutes of the March 28, 2024 meeting, Slifka?
Second, Mead.
Moved and seconded in home favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so with that, we will move on to the public hearings. The first one is 5A. It's 501 North First Street Variation, and it's a request for variation from Section 11-5C-4 Lot and Area Requirements to increase the total allowable lot coverage from 45% to 61.36%, and a variation from Section 11-13-3 Non-Conforming Lots of Record, and permit a side yard setback of 2.5 feet instead of the required 6 feet for a proposed rear yard deck. The applicant is Ryan Busletta, and the location again is 501 North First Street. Matt, the record, please.
All right, so the contents of this file include the following. We have an application for a variation filed by Ryan Busletta dated February 20, 2024. It includes the following items: project narrative, a response to the variation standards, a lot coverage calculation exhibit, a plot of survey, deck renderings, the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, an affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on March 27, 2024 for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated April 11, 2024.
All right, thank you, Matt. We'll hear from the applicant at this time.
Good evening. Hello. I'm Ryan Busletta, and the homeowner at 501 North First Street. The request today is to build a second-story deck off the east side of my home. My home entry is on the west and on Route 31. To the east is the Fox River, so there's a heavy decline to my yard towards the river. My wife and I have two young girls, ages six and 10, and currently have no flat space in the backyard away from Route 31.
Yes, yes. I've sworn everybody in honey.
Oh, is that how you do it?
Yes, that's how we do it. Yes.
I'm good, okay. My request will require an additional lot usage from the current 55% to approximately 61%, and an entry to the deck on the side of the home based on the layout of my house, on the side of the house. Here, we're requesting a side yard setback to 2.5 feet. Please note that my backyard green space will remain intact and as permeable as it is today, all grass and shrubs will remain as is. We're gonna build a deck out of high-quality truck composite and use platinum decking, who I understand built the most decks in Illinois last year. Finally, the deck will be, finally, the deck, it will provide a finished look to our backyard and will be consistent with other properties in our neighborhood and off of Route 31. So thanks again for your time and consideration, and happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay. Any questions from the Commission? John?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I'm interested, there's reference to an easement that previously, prior to a fence being built, had allowed some sort of access, whether it's walking access or something, down to the river.
Correct.
And it looks like that, it's slightly constrained now because of a fence to the east. Who owns the land under the easement, and is that, do you know if that's buildable? Or is anybody able to build on that easement, or shall it always remain open?
From my understanding, it's supposed to always remain open, and that's owned by the yellow house to our east.
To the south?
His name's, or, to the east of us, and slightly to the south, yeah.
Okay, okay, so, 'cause that, to me, that is, adds to, you know, to my, the case being compelling, to allow you to go, take a, to get a 2.5-foot setback versus a 6-foot, because nothing can be built. How wide is the easement, do you know?
I don't know if some had the exact amount, but...
It looks like there's considerable space between your house and the next house, and if the easement, if it's 10 feet or whatever, that can't be built on it, further buffers the adjacent property.
Correct, yes.
From your, from any structure.
Right.
And then, secondly, it does look like you could put a door on the back of the house, but there must be some interior arrangement of the house that compels you to come out to the south.
Correct. Yeah, there's a big bay window in the back, that's built out with windows across the hallway, so, yeah.
Okay, okay, that would be...
That would be a sizable investment.
Mess with your interior a little bit.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Okay.
Anything? Yeah, Michael?
One question. So, on the setback, so, something that affects it is the landing, the width of the landing, I think that's 8 feet. Is there a reason that that is as wide as it is?
Correct, it's more just from the traffic perspective. I'm a big guy, people in my family are of a bigger nature that come over, so it was more just from the traffic and going back and forth.
Okay, all right, thanks. Anything else? Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Public hearing?
Question for staff. Is there a need, one of the things we are concerned about with lot coverage is certainly water runoff. And if the ground underneath is left permeable, that allows anything that hits the deck to go down and still be absorbed by the ground. The applicant stated that they will leave it permeable, and that's their intent. Is there any need, in your opinion, of staff, that we should make that a condition of the variance?
Our, I don't know if it needs to be a condition. Our city engineer and our stormwater consultant both reviewed the application and confirmed that there really shouldn't be an impact as long as it does remain permeable.
Right.
And, I mean, if it's the Commission's desire to impose a condition...
My understanding would be, I, we have a second-story deck, and we have a paved patio underneath, but to do that, we had to get a building permit and permission, so if there was ever, that was ever to change to not, to non-permeable, they would theoretically have to come and legally have to come to the city for a building permit and approval to do that, correct?
I would assume so. It might depend exactly what they're doing, but, yeah, I mean, as long as the intent is to keep it permeable surface of some sort, it shouldn't have an impact on stormwater.
Yes, Rebecca?
If they opted to do, like, landscaping rocks, that's still considered permeable?
Yeah, there's, I think there's a variety of, you know, material that could be used, mulch or, you know, some sort of...
Because I would think that would get kind of wet, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, our, even our city engineer kind of said, you know, it's probably maybe not likely that the grass would survive underneath there, but as long as there's some sort of permeable, again, permeable surface, it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I don't think there's anything else from the Commission. Is there anything from the public that's here to speak on this matter? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Kathleen Brockett. I live at 459 North First Street.
Okay.
So I am just south of Ryan's home. I have no reservations or qualms about him putting a deck on his house. In fact, I think it will be an asset, I think it would be, enhance his home. And I would like to address what you commented on was the space between our two lots. My understanding, at one time, North Street was to go from across Route 50, or 31 to River Lane, and the city vacated that, and made for some interesting configurations of lots. So the lot that is between us is adjacent to a lot south of, or east of us.
Okay.
Okay, and it's owned by one owner.
And that's not you?
No, that's not, no, it's not. I'm not sure why it was vacated to the lot to the east as opposed to the lots on either side, but there are manhole covers that go down the length of that piece, and I would think that you would not be able to build on it.
Okay, so it's owned by the party to the east with the newer fence that got the variance?
Yes.
Who has a big dog that runs around in his yard? Three?
Yes.
I only saw one, but...
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other people wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, I don't see anyone. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Slifka, second. Moved and seconded. Anna, please call the roll.
Mead.
Mead, aye.
Slifka.
Slifka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye. Any further discussion? Probably not. I don't want any further questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for two variations related to proposed deckyard located at 501 North First Street in Geneva. First, that, first is for a variation from Section 11-5C-4 Lot and Area Requirements to increase the total allowable lot coverage from 45% to 61.36%, and also a variation from Section 11-13-3 Non-Conforming Lots of Record to permit a side yard setback of 2.5 feet instead of the required 6 feet, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Slifka, second. Moved and seconded. Anna, please call the roll.
Mead.
Mead, aye.
Slifka.
Slifka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye. Okay, Matt, what's next?
All righty, so this recommendation will go to City Council. The next day is gonna be May 6, so I'll send you an email tomorrow, just confirming that, if that works for you.
Correct.
And then, it'll be same time, same location.
All right, super.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Yep. Okay, so, our next public hearing, it's 5B. It's the Midwest Industrial Funds, MIF, Geneva Park, and the requests are for the following. First is an annexation, the second is a zoning map amendment from RR Rural Residential to I-1 Light Industrial, the third one is the preliminary plan unit development, and the fourth is a preliminary and final plat of subdivision for a proposed 211-acre industrial business park. The applicant is Midwest Industrial Funds. The location is generally located south of Illinois Route 38 and Couch Road intersection south to Fabian Parkway. The pins involved are 12-12-200-042, 12-12-200-035, 12-12-400-20, or 002, 2, 12-12-400-011, 12-12-400-015, and 12-12-400-021, and 12-12-400-022. I believe that's it, so, Matt, the record, please.
All righty, the contents of this file include an application for the annexation, a zoning map amendment, a preliminary PUD, and the preliminary and final plat of subdivision filed by Midwest Industrial Funds dated September 29, 2022. It includes the following: project narrative, legal description, a list of tax pins, a proof of ownership, a draft annexation agreement, the response to zoning map amendment standards, the response to special use standards, a list of development standards and deviations, the preliminary landscape plans, the common area landscape plans, the stormwater management report, the NPDES permit, a plat of annexation, plat of subdivision, a preliminary plat of PUD, a boring locations exhibit, development phasing exhibit, overall development plan, overall development plan alternate, overall development areas exhibit, the estimate of probable cost, the Kane County Wetland Permit, the US Army Corps of Engineers Approved Permit, a tree preservation survey, the Phase 1 Mass Rating and Roadway Improvements Plan, an auto turn exhibit, a Couch Road traffic study, the custom soil resource report, a stormwater permit application, land use opinion application, the Kane County Road Improvement Fee application, and then we have the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, the affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on March 27, 2024 for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and, finally, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated April 11, 2024.
Thank you, Matt. Very good. All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Matt Norton, I'm the attorney for MWI Property Group, formerly known as Midwest Industrial Funds, and we're pleased to be here tonight on our requests. Mr. Bucy identified them, and they're in the staff report. They are for annexation, zoning map amendment, preliminary PUD, and preliminary and final plat of subdivision. And we understand, really, tonight, the focus, the purpose of this hearing tonight is the Items 2, 3, and 4 on this list. I'm gonna introduce our team tonight, and our, my client, Midwest, I'm still saying Midwest Industrial Funds, MWI Property Group, will do most of the talking tonight. We don't all intend to get up here and present part of the main presentation, but we're all here tonight to answer questions as necessary. With MWI tonight here is, and I'll ask you guys, raise your hand when I call your name, Justin Fears, Mike Andrewich, and Jeremy Jalonic. The civil engineer for the project is Pinnacle Engineering, and here tonight with Pinnacle is Brian Johnson and Jana Bryant. V3 is our wetland consultant, Scott Breaka with V3 is here tonight, and you have met me. So, without further ado, I am going to turn it over to Justin.
Thank you for the opportunity to present our project to you. My name, as Matt said, is Justin Fears, I'm one of the founding principals of Midwest Industrial Funds, now MWI Property Group, and just to start with the rebranding, we formed our company in 2003, and we just recently rebranded as part of a national expansion. We've got projects going now in Jacksonville and Nashville and the Charlotte area, and we were a little bit restricted by having Midwest in our name, so we recently announced a rebranding to MWI Property Group. We're a national real estate investment, development, and management firm headquartered in Oak Brook. Chicago is our main market. We're one of the largest private industrial developers in Chicagoland. We focus purely on industrial development, industrial investment, very skilled, experienced, and talented team. We've completed 75 million square feet of transactions over the years nationally. Our executive team is 100 years of experience, 100-plus years of experience on the industrial real estate side. We've raised successfully three investment funds, we're in the middle of our third investment fund right now. We've got very strong lending relationships with many local, regional, and national lenders, CIBC, Wintrust, Associated Bank, and very deep relationships with them. This is a map that shows you the concentration of properties that we've developed or acquired since 2003. In red, you'll see dots that represent 20-plus different developments that we've done. In blue, you'll see dots of 70-plus existing building acquisitions that we have done. The total of all of them is over 10 million square feet. We've had 250-plus tenants over the years. We've been very, very active in the Chicagoland market, and as you can see, we've got quite a concentration in the west suburbs, and we've been one of the most active developers in the Fox Valley. You can see logically why we're drawn to this project, this multi-year project and this assemblage, just with the dots that are around here. We've got very good relationships with our tenant, we've got a very diverse tenant base, we've got light industrial tenants, we've got warehousing tenants, distribution tenants, packaging tenants, production tenants, food tenants, but part of what we liked about this, this land and this project and opportunity is just the concentration of development and acquisitions that we've done in the west suburbs and the tenant base that we have. We've been one of the most active developers, especially in the last 18 months. The last 18 months is, has been a slowdown in industrial development, but we've found ways to be active with the exceptional relationships that we have with capital and understanding the marketplace. While others have been sitting on their hands, we've launched 1.2 million square feet of new projects in the last 12 months, including a 600,000-square-foot project in Crest Hill, a two-building project in Libertyville, and we've got a build-a-suit that we're working on in the Bartlett area. So what you have in front of you is two different plans for our 200-plus-acre development and industrial park. On the left side is the main development plan, and on the right side is the alternate plan. Lots of thought and work goes into very intricate design elements of this plan, mostly to maximize flexibility. We're very good at, and very strong at, meeting the marketplace, meeting the marketplace for tenants, for users, designing parks and buildings that can work for the long term. We try to keep things flexible, as flexible as possible, even very small, different variations of why there's the different curvature of the Couch Road extension, as you can see. Let's see if I can get the pointer to work. Well, you can see on the left or the west side, we've got the ability to flip buildings north-south orientation or east-west orientation, and you can see similarly on the east side, we can do the same. And part of why we do that is we want to have maximum flexibility. This is a many-year project. This is a project that will likely be, you know, 10-plus years, and the buildings obviously will be here many more than that, and we want to have the maximum flexibility for market shifts, market changes. We want to be able to meet the market. We've made a name and a brand for ourselves on being able to meet the changes. We've gone through many boom times in industrial development, industrial investment, we've gone through slowdowns, we've gone through recessions, and we just know from experience that flexibility with building layouts is of the utmost importance. And you can see even in the southwest corner or the lower left, there's the ability to do one larger building, or quite easily, we could break that into four, four mid-sized buildings. Okay, thank you, thank you. This is a Class A industrial park. Everything we do is Class A to the highest institutional standards. That's what our tenants demand, that's what our lenders demand, that's what the institutional capital market demands. You can see eight buildings on the left, on the alternate side could be 12 buildings, could be multiple combinations of this, so we worked very hard with your great staff at figuring out a flexible plan to set this up in a way that we can get the most flexibility for what comes along while still, you know, checking boxes and being able to do it in expeditious manner to meet the market. You'll see all the way through, we've got separate entrances for car parks, separate entrances for truck courts. We're very big on safety with our buildings, very big on separating things and having the right design. Our tenants and our users demand that in the modern marketplace when we're developing something that's Class A. A couple of unique things, we'll get into it in more detail, but this is a very green industrial park. There's a large conservation area towards the west side that is 20-plus acres, plus there's an additional 20 acres of green space from the beginning. We've seen that as an amenity, we've seen tenants that really like those features that we build in our business parks as amenity, and we think it's a big strength and a great feature of the park. This is an example of the type of Class A building that we do. You know, this is not part of the official package because we're not moving forward at this stage with the first building. Right now, it's the business park, but as you can see, you know, we spend extra money to have really three tiers of glass on a high-image facade entry. We do clear-story windows, which you'll see here, we put those on multiple sides of the building to bring more natural light in the inside. Landscape, of course, precast concrete and glass, and today's modern industrial facilities are quite good-looking and look many, much different than they were 20, 30, 40 years ago. I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna turn the podium over to Brian Johnson, who's gonna walk through some of the infrastructure.
Thank you, Justin. My name is Brian Johnson with Pinnacle Engineering Group. Thank you, everybody, for allowing me to speak tonight. Let's see if this mouse works at all. Oh, perfect. So, as you guys can imagine, with the development like this, there is significant infrastructure and a lot of improvements necessary beyond just the building themselves to make something like this function. So as part of this project, you'll see in yellow, there's significant road improvements to the intersection of Fabian right here. There'll be additional turn lanes added. There's gonna be a brand-new road, which is Couch Road, which is gonna connect to IDOT's jurisdiction of Roosevelt Road. There's the extension of Water, which is that area in blue, which is gonna go to the western property line to a future expansion off-site, also go north along Couch Road, underneath the railroad tracks, and then up to Roosevelt. And there's also gonna be a sanitary sewer extension as well, in green, that connects to a trunk line that runs along the north side of the property. There's gonna be a new substation, so there's gonna be significant electrical infrastructure that's gonna go in as part of this development as well. And mind you, a lot of this infrastructure is gonna be here to service not only this development, but regional improvements as well to the entire, call it, eastern portion So, with, with the traffic and the road improvements that we spoke upon, as you can So with the traffic and the road improvements that we spoke upon, as you can imagine, there's a significant amount of stakeholders that are involved. It's not just the developer themselves, but there is IDOT, KDOT, City of Geneva, Batavia, West Chicago as well, that this has been a collaborative effort probably over the last couple of years to put this connection between Fabian in place to Roosevelt Road. And even so, it's been a part of basically Geneva's comprehensive plan, that they've been having this planned as a future function for this space to be extended and designated as an arterial roadway system. With the southern expansion south of the road, and with the anticipated when IDOT reconstructs Roosevelt Road and the intersection and turnout in south and salt at the time. So basically, what we're saying is, as part of the initial Phase 1 of Couts Road, there's a significant amount of improvements that need to be had as far as the embankment. Everybody knows Roosevelt Road's fairly elevated, so there's going to be about a year's worth of earthwork and compaction and settlement that needs to occur before that final extension and connection can be made. So around 80% of Couts Road would get built day one. That'll go in with all the infrastructure that was outlined before, and then that remaining 20% will happen during Phase 2. As the park starts to get developed and as additional counts are warranted, KDOT is already anticipating that there could be a potential light, you know, that might be warranted, you know, maybe as soon as 2030 at Couts and Fabian. So with all of this infrastructure going on, we wanted to kind of talk about how this phased approach looks. You know, right now, Phase 1, that kind of brown color would be the extension of Couts Road, that's at 80%, roughly. They get you to the cul-de-sac, which is up here at the north side of the site, and then we'll get the construction of stormwater management facilities here, 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 and here. We'll continue to start the enhancement of the wetland, and we'll get into that a little bit later, which is this yellow area here. The installation of the water sewer, the power along Couts that we alluded to as well. And then we'll start building any one of these adjacent lots, Lot 1, Lot 2, and/or Lot 4. Basically, Phase 2, once all that is complete, we'll go ahead and make the future connection up here at Roosevelt Road, which has already been planned for the Couts Road extension. You guys have drawn through there. They've already got the turn lanes in, it's just been striped, so there's a little bit of connectivity that'll often be needed as well. The other really neat thing is, as part of this Couts Road extension, there's going to be a bike path that's going to be added, heavy vegetation and landscaping along that corridor. It'll look very aesthetically pleasing, and it'll provide a lot of interconnectivity in between the two, as well as, you know, access for local tenants to get in and around the park itself. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike for future discussion on the wetland. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. My name's Mike Androwich. I'm one of the other owners of MWI Property Group. We appreciate the Planning and Zoning Commission allowing us to speak tonight and present the Geneva Business Park developments. What you're looking at here is the 40-acre conservancy area that we created in this park, and I think when you look at this, we have to take a step back and really look at where we started on this project well over seven years ago, this 210-acre-plus, I guess 211-acre-plus development. And we knew there were certain things that we had to contend with specifically. We knew we wanted to connect Couts Road at Roosevelt Road and down at Fabian, and that could only go on so many places because of the lots we had, so we had to contend with that. And we also had an 8.24-acre jurisdictional wetland that was on the far east side. It actually kind of sits right in that bluish area of the conservancy. So those are two challenges we had on this development. That prompted us to start working with our engineers, Brian Johnson at Pinnacle and Scott Breaka at V3, our wetland consultant, to figure out what's the best thing to do on the site, what's the best layout, what's the best plan. And interestingly enough, this 8.24-acre wetland area, many developers buy wetland credits in wetland banks, and they increase their development area in their park. But we pushed and pulled and prodded on this project, and really, we came up with the opposite. We discovered a new opportunity for this park, something where we could not only keep the 8.24 acres, but we can also expand upon it and build around it and create this 40-acre conservancy area that we have, that you see there on the screen there. So there were, we really fell in love with the whole idea of the conservancy, and the only problem, there was challenges from the economic side of things. Because we lost 40 acres, which represented almost 20% of our park, it did have a strain on economics because there was less buildable land, but we actually felt that the positives outweighed the negatives. As Justin mentioned earlier, you know, we thought this was a great amenity to a business park that we could help attract tenants. We felt like it was just positive all the way around to have this conservancy in place in perpetuity. It was just a good environmental impact that we were creating, and we just thought this was a great asset for the city of Geneva, Kane County, and actually the state of Illinois to have this conservancy locally in Geneva. Some of the positives that came out of the creation of the conservancy is we were actually able to save 1,612 trees. They were not in the wetland area necessarily, but they were in the woodland section, and many of those trees were Class A and Class B trees, so that means the diameter of their trunks were anywhere from 10 to 40 inches. So these were very mature trees, so we were excited about that. Another thing we were happy about was that this area, as I mentioned a while ago here in this presentation, it's going to remain a conservancy in perpetuity. There's going to be a conservation easement in place, and we're working with the leading Chicago Conservancy Foundation to sign an easement agreement with them to manage this wetland and conservancy once it is finalized. The name of the conservancy organization is the Conservancy Foundation. Again, they're a leader, and we're very happy to be aligned with them in this process. Some other nice features, you really can't see in the legend. It's down below, but in that right-hand corner, but some other things that we're able to, I'm going to rattle them off if it's okay. Some other things that we're able to do with this conservancy area is we're able to reestablish 4.5 acres of wetland. That original 8.24 acres of wetland, we're able to rehabilitate it because it was in somewhat poor shape, but it's going to be high-quality wetland going forward. We have 5.41 acres of prairie buffer. We have 4.68 acres of woodland buffer. We have 5.0 acres of woodland buffer establishment. We have 13.04 acres of BMP buffers. And, you know, when you think, this isn't just trees and wetlands or whatever, but another thing with this conservancy is the water quality that's going to come out of this conservancy and eventually go into creeks, streams, and rivers is going to be a much higher quality as it passes through all the vegetation in this area, and we're very happy about that. Additionally, this conservancy, when complete, will create a better habitat for pollinators. So I guess that's the birds, the bees, the butterflies, the bats. There'll all be insects, wildlife. They'll all frolic in this 40 acres for, really for eternity. So again, we couldn't be happier with that. You know, at MWI Properties, there's a couple of things we really, there's two things that we really make sure we do on every project, and we don't waver on these. The first one is we always try to leave things better than we found them. That's number one. And number two, we always try to add value in whatever community we're working on. So we really think with this thoughtful design of the business park and the conservancy area, we have met both of those goals, and this is something we're very proud of as a company to present these plans tonight. So that's the conservancy. The next slide I'm going to talk about is project investment and the economic impact. As Justin mentioned earlier, we'll be building approximately 2.5 million square feet of buildings in the business park when things are complete. That represents a project cost of roughly $250 million, and the same as the investment from the developers of $250 million. So pretty much right off the bat, we're going to be spending 20-plus million dollars on the investment in the park, in the infrastructure, right-ofways, roads, lighting, power, storm, sanitary water mains. We're also going to be creating 1,000 construction-related jobs, 1,200 permanent jobs, and there's going to be a $308 million total economic impact from this project. So again, I think, you know, when you look at all this and you look at the conservancy and you take a step back and look at the overall project from Couts Road coming down from Roosevelt to Fabian, making a connection that is, in my opinion, after working out here for 30 years in the industry, I feel like it's a well-needed road improvement. Obviously, IDOT thought so too. They put the fourth leg in, but they just didn't have anyone to finalize it. So when you look at that, when you look at the construction of the substation that's going to provide power not only to our business park, but also to the entire southeast section of Geneva, excuse me. And again, when you also look at the infrastructure, which is the water main, storm drains, sanitary, all that stuff is in this area now, so other properties can utilize that as well. So, you know, MWI feels this project offers many long-term benefits to the city of Geneva, also to the surrounding communities, counties, and even the state. So we're very excited about this project and being part of the city of Geneva, and we appreciate your consideration of this project tonight. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Just to wrap up, the staff report identifies the various standards that apply to zoning map amendments and plan unit developments. I'm not going to reiterate those one by one, but they're in the staff report, and suffice it to say that we agree with the staff's conclusions, the facts, and the effect of those facts as regards these applications. I did want to just point out one of them, though, and that is factor number one under the plan unit development. And that factor is whether the proposed use at the specified location is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. And sometimes that is not, sometimes the answer to that question is not clear, but we're fortunate that it is crystal clear here. You have an amendment, an addendum to your comprehensive plan called the Southeast Subarea Plan, and that plan specifically identifies this property as the primary opportunity, and I'm quoting, "the primary opportunity within the Geneva Southeast Subarea Plan to create a significant industrial and business park for the city of Geneva," end quote. And that's really what MWI is delivering here. It is, its project will effectuate the city's comprehensive plan. With that, we'll conclude our initial presentation, and we're glad to answer your questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions? Comments? I want to get started. Rebecca.
Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. You were talking about the green space and all the green initiatives that you're using in the building, or in the area, so I was just curious about, like, with the buildings themselves, are there other green pieces from, in the plans, I guess?
Are you talking about the vertical buildings or the site itself?
The vertical, the actual buildings, like...
...
Materials or any other pieces that are...
Again, this is Brian Johnson with Pinnacle Engineering Group. With regards to vertical construction, I know in the past from working with this group, they do follow a lot of the recommended LEED standards, which deals with local source materials, clean materials, reusable materials, and with a site like this, obviously, there's a significant amount of best management practices being involved on the exterior side. So I would presume that a lot of that would still be implemented in these projects as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And just a reminder, too, they'll have to come back before us for final PUD approval, and at that stage, we'll have, you know, more info on the actual buildings themselves.
Just detailed site planning, so, yeah. John?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions for the applicant. Regarding the connection to Route 38 and the phasing of the construction, it appears as though, and certainly there's a good amount of earthwork that has to be done to build up to elevate the south portion of that intersection up to the existing intersection. I imagine that has to remain in place to compact appropriately before you can actually build a road on it. So you'll start the road, you'll complete it to the cul-de-sac south of Couts and 38, along with the other lateral improvements. Do you envision starting any of the buildings on lots 1 through 4 prior to starting and/or completing the connection to Route 38? And the reason I'm asking is, I think, I'm expecting that that's potentially a yes, depending on market demand, but I think it would be challenging to do too much development without a certainty that that connection was going to take place, and we potentially would be relying on an unsignaled entrance only from the south. So if you could address that.
Yes, so first of all, and we talked a lot about the flexibility of this, but yes, ultimately, we've got to put the road and the infrastructure in, and then our plan is we're starting the infrastructure. That's when we're looking at the market dynamics. At that point, we'll have had some lead marketing time. We'd love to have perhaps a build-to-suit in tow, or we're very astute at building spec buildings that meet the market and the right size. But ultimately, we've got to start with the road, and we hope towards the tail end of when the road will be completing, that's when we'll be building our first building, whether we have a tenant in mind or not. And whether it can go on Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4, that depends on a lot of the market dynamics. We've really front-end loaded the spend on Phase 1 to be able to get all four of those lots or any division thereof buildable. I mean, at the end of the day, Lot 3, if Lot 3 was activated and we built, we would be building an east-west road extension in conjunction with that. But largely, you know, we're there, obviously, Lot 1 and Lot 2. There's really no other infrastructure that then has to be done. But from our perspective, you know, a lot in terms of how many buildings we would build from a market demand perspective before the embankment compacts and we can now complete the road to Couts, a lot depends on the users that come here. You know, many times on a typical 200,000-square-foot building, we could have as few as 25 employees, but we absolutely could have a manufacturing company that could have 300 employees. So that's something we're going to continue to watch on a building-by-building basis, look at the truck traffic, look at the car traffic, and take each one of those. But we feel like just with what we've looked at with our team, traffic study, the rest of it, there's no question that this park can handle multiple buildings, 1, 2, 3, 4 potential buildings, you know, before the actual connection has to be made. Because as you said, first, we have to grade it, it has to compact, we have to give it some time before that we can then finish the connection in the latter phase to Roosevelt Road.
Okay, so can I assume then, I'm sensing a commitment to do that, to complete that connection. Is it safe to assume that your lateral development budget that you'll be using and that lenders will, you know, your lender will... will, you know, your lender will accept and is going to be fully packed to include that intersection cost upfront?
Yes, yes, that, that is, that is true. And, and actually, I mean, a large portion of that cost is the embankment and getting the material there and in place, yes. The actual road connection costs, which likely would be, you know, a couple of years later, that wouldn't necessarily be part of our, our Phase 1 financing, that's part of the Phase 2, but just acknowledge and realize that a lot of the spend is in the earthwork and, and the balancing. A lot of the material that is going to make that embankment is coming from the various master plan detention ponds that you see. So it's an overdig of those ponds and it's placing and compacting all in an organized fashion as part of this, this Phase 1.
Okay. And while you're up there, you, you had talked about the, the 40-acre conservancy. We see reference 28 acres here throughout the package. I'm assuming the other 12 acres is interspersed, some of the, the wetlands areas and everything else to, to get to 40, is that right?
Yeah.
And then, and then your slide that you had up there, I was just curious, is there any way to, to kind of, with your point or whatever, lay out how that, that, how that compares to the location of some of the buildings? Is that completely outside of the buildable lots, or is that?
That it could take, it's completely outside of the buildable lots and then ultimately then?
So that's to the west?
Exactly, to the west. And once this, um, once this wetland area is improved and enhanced, then it's turned over in the perpetual easement to the Conservation Foundation. So this is the one thing that could not change. We look for a lot of flexibility, but at the end of the day, the, the BMPs, the buffers, the stormwater, this is an area that's done and fixed.
To, to achieve this, are you mitigating onsite any existing wetlands to, 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 to the site?
Sure. I'll let Scott take it.
All right, good evening. Scott Breko with V3 Companies. So yeah, there is a long history here on this site, uh, but to directly answer your question, we have permits in place from both the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, as well as Kane County Stormwater, that allow for the mitigation of impacts to wetlands, both core-regulated and isolated Kane County wetlands, within this complex. And as part of that, to reiterate the conservancy effort, uh, one of the requirements from the Corps of Engineers is to have a long-term steward, as well as a conservation easement, which as mentioned before, the Conservation Foundation here from Naperville, Illinois, who are big proponents and hold many of these easements and actually do the long-term stewardship, are engaged and will be part of this.
Okay. Great. I have one more question. Driving the site and the adjacent development to the east, uh, I think south of, I think it's the Tenanted Shore or something, uh, up near 38, there appeared to be a cul-de-sac or a turnaround between the shore building and the building to the south that looked like it had a potential future, potential, um, access or throughway to this subject site. Is there any plans to, to consider any connection with, to the property to the, to the east?
No.
Didn't think so, but it, it looked like they had at least developed it to, to, to handle that, if that was the case. Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, Michael. Just to follow up on a, a couple of the questions. So the conservancy area, that'll be, you'll continue to own that land?
It will be, ownership will ultimately go to an owners' association, um, uh, for the, for the park, which will own it in perpetuity. The Conservation Foundation will own their conservation easement in perpetuity. We will, we, we, the, the developer initially, and then the association, will be required to finance the long, the perpetual management of that. And both the city and the Conservation Foundation will have protection to make sure we do that because there will be a backup special service area approved as part of this. I, you asked me what time it was, I told you how to build a watch, but, um, that, that's the ownership maintenance situation.
I appreciate that. So, and so there'll be obviously an easement through the property to access that?
Yes.
To access that. And I just want to follow up on something John asked, and this is maybe for staff, but you talked about the, the buildings all being approved in the future. So if there, i- if there are delays in infrastructure or road construction or whatever, and the buildings get ahead of that, and that analysis is always still available in the future?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, the, the team will have to come before us again, and the final PUD review will come before the commission and ultimately council, um, at that time when they are ready to proceed with, with those plans.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you very much. We'll proceed with the public hearing. Will we do a list, or do we have a list? We usually do it in order of sign-up, so soon as I get the list, we'll start calling the roll. We'll go through the list first, and then anybody's left, uh, that hasn't spoken to, we'll speak at that time. Okay, so, I mean, I'm going to assume that some of these people may, I may call some of the people. So Linda, are you with the group, or Linda, there's Linda Schultz, Schultz, I'm sorry? Uh, it's, uh, 01567 Oak Creek Road? Yes? Do you care to speak on this matter? Okay. Zorin Sopak?
No.
No? Okay. Um, Melanie Shaw?
No.
No? Okay, you're on the list, so I'm calling you. Brian Maher? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in front of the commission, I appreciate it. On Arbor Day last year, my wife and I approached the city council, asking for some sort of dialogue with MIF regarding the sighting of one building in the plans for this eight building project. We were not advocating at this time that the project shouldn't be built, but only that they considered changing their plans for one of these buildings. This was done to try and save what are becoming very rare pre-settlement remnant oaks in the north part of this state. There were also two witness trees in this area. And if you don't know what those are, please Google it. They're two of what are only five other witness trees in Geneva. Now, there's a difference of opinion of several hundred feet between myself and the city of Geneva as to the location of these witness trees. But they were either destroyed last year by MIF, or as is the city's contention, they were destroyed several years ago on another project. Either way, they're now gone forever, either due to MIF's actions or someone's incompetence. I saw a chart up there showing trees preserved and trees planted. I'd like to see a chart showing Class A and Class B trees that were destroyed and ground into giant mulch piles or trucked off to be sold. Paleolithic artifacts have also been documented on this property by the Illinois State Archaeological Survey. After trying numerous times with no response from MF, we began trying to get a response by utilizing public opinion and the media. Nearly 5,000 signatures on a change.org petition, many phone calls, many emails to them, media coverage on BBM, LS, Daily Herald, The Chronicle, and The Tribune, and we could not get a response from anyone. They gave their response on the Tuesday after Labor Day, 2023. That's when we awoke to the sound of saws taking out trees. This was surprising, uh, considering that their Army Corps permit indicated that, uh, trees could not be, trees greater than three inches could not be taken between October, could only be taken between October 1st and March 31st of any construction year due to the documented bat roosts. Now, why the rush to destroy these trees for a building that shows a 2034 build-out? Kane County has no tree preservation ordinance, uh, thanks to some on the county board, though there will be one in the future. Geneva does have a tree preservation ordinance, which MF, MF would have had to abide by after annexation. Apparently, they decided, why wait and comply with a tree preservation ordinance? Just take them all out in advance. They also demolished a building on the property which was listed on the Historic American Building Survey. There are only two other buildings in Geneva on this prestigious national registry. I have been told they demolished trees on neighboring properties, off the property line. So here they are, hat in hand, asking for rezoning and annexation. And my daddy told me, when someone shows you who they are, believe them. Now, the fact they've proven they're not interested in being good neighbors probably isn't a reason for this board to officially look askance at this project. So let's consider some other factors, perhaps you will weigh. Using the industry standard for determining the number of docks required per anticipated truck volume, there are 500 doors, dock doors proposed on this development, which meets a standard for 700 trucks per hour during peak hours. Now, what I'm going to discuss here doesn't even include the DuPage industrial part, which still has 640 open acres, the Pheasant Run build-out, the Batavia cross-dock facility, or the Geneva Oaks building, which are all within a mile of this development. So let me share with you my calculations of only three of these contaminants that diesel emissions will generate per hour from this one development. Particulate matter released by diesels contain microscopic solids and/or liquid droplets that are so small they can be inhaled and cause serious health problems. Some particles less than 10 micrometers and microns, actually in diameter, can go deep into your lungs and some can get into your bloodstream. Of these particles less than 2.5 microns are the worst. They're known as PM 2.5s, I'm sure you all know about that, and they pose the greatest risk to health. So by my calculations, based on the number of dockers they're going to have, one pound per hour, per hour of PM 2.5s. Imagine how many particles it takes to make a pound of something that is 1/30th the size of a hair. That's a lot of particles being emitted per hour. Carbon monoxide, 700 pounds per hour potentially from these trucks in and out, per hour. NOx, oxides of nitrogen, 60 pounds per hour. This does not include the added emissions for increased car traffic. MF has 1,500 spaces for car parking in this development as well. We all know traffic is already very difficult at Kirk and 38. And these traffic and environmental concerns will not be limited to the east side alone. Everyone in Geneva will be affected by these and other unforeseen consequences. MS is, MF is committed to only building four of these warehouses. It's all dependent on market conditions. Crane Chicago refers to overbuilding being an issue and spec building occupancy is down in the area. We have no idea what many of these buildings might hold in the future, what they'll contain, and the city will have no real control over what goes in there. When discussing a similar proposal, a commission member referred recently to being stuck with white elephants. Very good observation, I'm afraid. We've lived in Geneva, my wife and I, and my daughter, we've lived in Geneva for, or the township for 40 years. We've seen many changes to what used to be our little town. I'm absolutely not against progress and change. It happens. I believe overall, these changes have made Geneva a better place. But you're now faced with this. If this change will make Geneva a better place for the residents you represent. That was quite a presentation about the project we just heard. Many stakeholders were mentioned. You know who wasn't mentioned? Not even once. The stakeholders, they want to be a part of this public-private partnership when they come to the city council asking for TIF funds. Residents of Geneva, and specifically those of us who will be neighbors to this project, weren't mentioned once. And we've been ignored, quite frankly, by MF up until now. Consider the Amazon cross-dock facility that was going to be built. I think we can all agree that the campus going in there is a much better fit for that area. Naperville was just put on a list as the number one place to live in America. Algonquin Planning and Zoning just approved a very nice-looking development in their town. It was people just like you on commissions and councils making decisions like the one in front of you that brought recognition and sustainable development to these towns. I believe that Geneva should have these same kind of accolades. Please, consider this request for you very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David Wolensyak, I believe. David, you always come here and I always butcher your name, I'm sorry. You've been before us numerous times, and I, and one day I'll get your name correct.
David Wolensyak. I guess one of the big things that I'm concerned about is all of this, we, we really don't know exactly what they're building. They have two plans, but everything is up to market conditions, market demands. So we don't really know what's going in there. Is it going to be truck transfer facilities? Is it going to be all cross-dock? I mean, right now in the main plan, it looks like there's at least two cross-dock facilities or could be. And again, those type of facilities, as we saw, bring in a lot more truck traffic. I'm not against the industrial or it being placed in this area. I mean, I realize what's in West Chicago, I understand Geneva wants to get, uh, some industrial for the tax base, stuff like that, but I wish it was more dedicated for manufacturing and not, and also not as dense of a layout. I'll start out by addressing my concerns to the deviations to the zoning codes that are being requested, and I'll take it in the order that they listed them. So this came from request number three. Request A was the building height. They, they want to go to 60 feet, and then they also have it that the maximum height will be measured from the finished floor to the top of the precast. The code is 50 feet, and right now that 50 feet includes equipment on top of the buildings. So they're asking for a lot taller buildings. And, and I guess I would want to understand the reason why they want that. Setbacks, which is request B through E, and this, this is the big thing that's got, when I look at this, boy, I wish we could get a 3D view and take you down, down the Kautz Road extension. They want to go for the street yard setback. The building, they want to take it from 40 feet down to 20. 20 feet for a 60-some-foot-high building. Right now, my house has got 10 feet more than that to the easement of the street. And then they want to take the parking from 10 feet, uh, from 20 feet down to 10. So again, everything they're, they're, they're cutting in half. The year, the rear yard setback from 30 to 20, the parking on the, the rear yard from 20 to 10, and then the side yard, they want to go from 20, that they're keeping at 20, and then the parking to 10. I, I believe they want to go 10 feet for, for parking, uh, anywhere on the property. And then one address, uh, one item that wasn't addressed, that's in the codes, in the municipal codes that we use for the city of Geneva, is what's called a transitional. And for that, you need, uh, building 40 feet and parking 40 feet. Some of the adjoining property to the west, and that's on the south end, is zone residential. So I guess my question to the P and Z, would that have to comply to that 40-foot setback requirements if it's zoned as residential right now? And it seems like the driving factor for all these requests is to ensure in adequate, the way they've worded, to ensure an adequate development area on each lot, while also allowing for the applicant to preserve about 28 acres of land for the wetland conservation area. My, my main concern looking at this, and you can see on these drawings, look at that Kirk Road extension and picture those buildings as being 60-some-feet-high. That's going to be, I, I guess, I- That's going to be, I guess, I look at it and I think of it as the new Geneva Grand Canyon of warehouses. I mean, that's really, that's really a tight distance, and by them taking it down. Now, would the extra, I mean, you take a look at West Chicago, you go to Batavia, you look at the warehouses, and they're set way the heck back. This, they went 10 feet to the parking and 20 feet to the building from the road right-of-way. There's not much distance in there. That's a canyon. That is a canyon. And along with request F, which is lot coverage, on top of that, they want to take it, they want 90%, be able to build on 90%. So we keep talking about the green, the green, but we're taking it from, the code is 80% they want to take it to 90% being able to build on it. So as far as I'm concerned, there's very little green area. Now, they keep mentioning the wetland conservation. I look at that, we had one where I used to work in Schaumburg, where we had a huge, we called it the swamp. And at least we had a park, the company actually made a park to it, and you could drive and go there. I don't see anybody but the people parking in the warehouses being able to see that. I mean, is there, again, I'm going to, to the applicant, ask, you know, is there, is there any plans in any of this where there's actually a park where people can go and see this wetland? That I don't see. Okay. And again, let's see. One thing that I look at and I question is if you take a look at the number of car versus the truck parking spots, I sort of get the feeling these are warehouses. They keep talking about, and I even heard at the city council, the one person mentioned that it's very, very possible that it could be other, and they showed a picture at last, at the Monday meeting, like a laboratory setting. But again, I don't see that with the number of, you know, I wish it was manufacturing. I'd like to see more manufacturing, because I think that's where the higher-paid jobs The plans for warehousing in this country for the next four years, if you read any of the industrial reports, engineering, the goal is to cut out the workers. Bad enough, those are the lower-paying jobs to begin with, they want to cut it out, it's going to be robots. Four years from now, you're going to see very few people up front in these warehouses. And they're, again, they're not the highest-paying jobs if it was engineering or manufacturing. I did not see any information, I may have missed it because I noticed that the loading docks were mentioned. So I really, again, I couldn't get a full picture. I take a look at the number of cars, and I take a look at the number of truck stalls. But again, you know, if I knew that some of, there was only 12 docks to a big building, that tells me, yeah, it's probably going to be made more for manufacturing or something like that. If I know it's one of the two big buildings, the one all the way north or the one all the way south, my guess is those are probably crossdock facilities where trucks going in and out all day long. Request I, they talk about its storage and truck parking, and on number one, they mentioned, let's see, outdoor storage of materials and equipment in the areas that are screened as defined by the zoning ordinance. Per minute screening will include chain-link fencing with slats. What are they envisioning as being stored behind these fences, and how high are they, and how close to the roadway? Right now, the parking lots are only 10 feet away from the roadway easement. So again, you know, where are these located on these lots? I've listened in on these meetings, and it seems like signage in Geneva always seems to be a big contention, you know. Is it an inch too long or too wide? They want to go to a maximum sign. My understanding, when you look at the codes, it seems like we cap things off at 40 square feet. They want the, to the park, the main signs. And again, maybe it's going to be beautiful, maybe it's all brick and, but they want to go to 500 feet, 500 square feet they're calling out. The code is 16 feet high, they want to go to 25 feet. And for the individual buildings, they're calling out, they want to change in the code that it should not exceed 300 square feet. So each building can go to 300 square feet. Well, right now, when I look at the municipal codes, I'm seeing 40 feet. Review comments, landscaping. The applicant has provided two development alternatives for the proposed subdivision, but the overall site plan would be dependent on the market conditions and demand. Though, the one question I have is, when I looked at the drawings that they did have that showed plants and trees, I guess, once you're in this, where all these warehouses are, it probably doesn't make that much difference. It would be nice to have trees all along the roadway, stuff like that. Again, I don't know how much, when you've only got 20 feet between the roadway or the sidewalk and the building, I'm not quite sure how much you're going to be able to put in But if you take a look at the property at the very north or at the very south, which to me would be visible from either Fabian or 38, I saw very few trees. In fact, when I took the scale and the drawings and looked, they're like 100 feet apart. So to me, that's not much screening. And I was very concerned from a safety standpoint, again, they want 10 feet setback for parking. You've got the railway there, and I honestly don't know, and they might be able to address, I don't know if the railway is at the same level as what this property's going to be. It kind of looks that way to me when I drove over towards the bridge. But it sure seems like some precautions should be taken so that people coming out can't just get onto those railroad tracks very easily. It just seems from a safety standpoint that you'd want to put a berm in there or something, because now we've got trains whipping by at 60-some miles an hour through there. The roadway network, they talk about the extension of Couch Road may help to divert industrial traffic moving through the city via Kirk Road, but providing an alternate north-south route. And that's great. I don't see a problem with that. Now, from what I can see, there's no traffic line at this time being proposed at Fabian Parkway. So you're starting out with one entrance, and you don't have a light for it. But then the thing that really got me concerned is, the southeast master plan they talk about and propose development would provide the 100-foot right-of-way for one internal east-west road located between lots two and three. That's the future Cherry Lane. Cherry Lane already exists.
Ma'am, you'll have a chance to speak later if you wish.
A second east route was also not established with the proposal, just, and that was going, when I looked at where they were talking about putting it in, it seemed like it was going to line up with the entrance to the ice arena. Now, if they get rid of that one, and it seems like that one is a problem for them because it takes up too much space, because number one, the wetland is in there, they'd have to deal with the swamp and fill it in and do whatever they have to do. The Cherry Lane, which empties out by the church and the Cougar Stadium, there's a, you know, during the summer, at certain times, that's a very, very busy intersection. I mean, luckily, there's a traffic light there. But I would be concerned if that road did go all the way through, because number one, it would be defeating the purpose of keeping, you know, maybe you're just going to have cars on it and not allow trucks, I don't know. But it just seems if you're going to be emptying trucks out there, that's just a disaster waiting to happen there by the Cougar Stadium. The road and building construction, they're, okay, they're mentioning this cul-de-sac because they have to build up and get the ramp to Route 38. And that sounds great, but it sounds like they may put in a few buildings before that. And it sounds like that could take a year, maybe two years. I don't know if the date is actually decided on that. The current concern I would have, let's say you put one of the warehouses, you don't start at Fabian Parkway, but you start with warehouses towards the north end. What happens for emergency vehicles? How long is it going to take them to get all the way down to Fabian and then get all the way back? What does that add to response times? Fire trucks, ambulances? That's a pretty good distance there, I'd let, you know. And, let's see. We haven't actually, now, they're talking about this is going to be many phases. I don't know if we've actually seen anything where it's actually describing any of the phases. It seems like this is all, again, kind of open to market demands. We're hearing it could be 10 years. It would be nice to see some kind of idea, just like we saw with the Bullock project, that they have some idea of phases. They've got to have some idea of what they're building and who they may be building for, because I don't think they'd be going into this. And another thing that I would like to see the applicant maybe describe in a little better detail, because it's very, very difficult on these drawings, is that Couch Road, is that a single lane on each side with just a common center lane? And is that with the amount of traffic, truck and car in there? That's quite a bit of vehicles that could be coming through there. Is that wide enough, you know, going through the canyon? And then the last item, the what-if, for the infrastructure, we're already paying more for electric and water. We're issuing bonds, but if things don't go right, the residents may end up paying that cost with higher property taxes. And now we're looking at giving this area TIF incentives. What is the city's Plan B if these warehouses don't get sold or leased? What tax break, what tax base do they actually bring in if they're just sitting empty like all the other warehouses that have been built? West Chicago, Geneva, St. Charles, what happens if they just sit empty? You know, are the citizens going to have to end up paying money? So, and again, there's quite a few, right now, I took a look, and there's quite a few warehouses that are sitting there with available space. If they were to put in a plan, their second alternative plan, which is the most square feet, that would be giving Geneva, and this is, this is just counting big warehouses, over 4 million square feet of warehousing that would be able to be leased or bought with all the other projects that are going on. And right now, with the existing Geneva, St. Charles, Batavia, and West Chicago, there's about 4 million, not counting this project. So this is a considerable-size project, and it will have impacts to traffic. I say some of my biggest concerns are that roadway going to the west, and just how narrow all these zoning deviations, how narrow that roadway is between these buildings. What is that really going to look like? With that, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Next person on the list is Dan Hobbs or Lobbs. 33 West 568. Do you want to speak? I think it's June Mather? Sorry, okay, no, okay. Ryan, Ryan, okay. Justin, hard to read the last name. It's 1112 West, I'm sorry, okay. John Dawson, I think it is? Dawson? 733 Lexington Drive? John, okay, no, okay. Jana, she's a brat. Scott? No? Okay. Michael Rathman? I'm sorry, Michelle Rathman? I'm sorry.
It's my handwriting, it's not your pronunciation.
I'm bad at pronunciation and reading.
That's okay, I'm bad at handwriting as well. My gosh, well, first of all, yes, Michelle Rathman, 538 Lexington Drive, and there's very little that I could say that my very well-researched neighbors have not already done. Phew, they've done a lot of homework, and I was glad for their questions. I'm appreciative for those of you who were here tonight, your council members or community members who had questions as well. I very rarely come to these meetings. I wish I could do more, but I will say, I come when I really feel like more voices need to be heard. I was very much involved with the process of addressing the project at across from Geneva Drive that was ultimately named the Amazon Project. And that is just to say that I've been really paying attention to the patterns, and I really believe wholeheartedly that in this kind of, these kind of situations, we end up dealing with which that we choose not to manage. And so many of the issues that have come up tonight about the roads and all the different parties that were involved in even getting road improvements, the county and so forth, so many moving parts, and it just feels like to me that we're kind of back at a place where we are doing, moving the goalpost zoning. So the petitioners who have come up with these great plans, and I love the beautiful pictures, we've seen many of those warehouses around our community, you have this idea for this land, and then when you get in there, you kind, it feels to me like a bit of buyer's remorse, that we've got the swamp already, and we'll kind of fit this into that and so forth. And my question to this committee and to our community is, why should we have to move our goalposts after someone purchases this property and promises to do these great things? I think I heard $250 million in investments, maybe it's more, and the great news is $308 million in economic impact. And my question would be to ask, what is that economic impact? I actually happen to work in land development for healthcare, so I understand, we say economic impact. It's jobs, the developers pay for the infrastructure themselves, they don't ask for a penny from the community, from the taxpayers unless they are a levy-dependent organization like a hospital is. So I just wonder if we, why we move the goalposts for another project that will really not net any real true benefit? It's not going to be a sanctuary for birds or butterflies, as much as I love the idea of flittering about critters, do our grandchildren get to go see the butterflies? Do we get to see the birds? Do we get access to parks? So I would just ask this community to really ask some of the questions. We've been here before, we don't need to go someplace where it's not necessary for us. I believe there are projects for this community that benefit us so much more than more empty warehouses. And if that is going to be the way that we go, to make sure that we ask those who are coming before us to just be really transparent, because where there is no transparency, there cannot be trust. I appreciate your time this evening, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, um, I think it's Carl, Carl?
Bobski.
Bobski?
I'll pass.
You're gonna pass? I think it's Megan, Meg?
Megan.
Yes. Please. It's you. It's the only Meg, it's the only Meg on the list, so it's gotta be you.
Okay, there can't be too many of us. My name's Mad Bussy, I live on the left side of everything over there. And so, the interesting thing has been, I have been watching this process for close to six years? Do you think, Mike? Probably? My property was annexed by Geneva four years ago, simply because we knew this was going in, I wanted to have some say, I didn't want building number four to be blocking my potential entrance from this development to my property here. The road that is going in front of building number three was part of my annexation agreement to have access from this development to the 30 acres that make up my property. The reason it's not gonna hook up to Cherry Lane is because for Cherry Lane to come east, it has to go through more wetlands. And the, you have many southeastern plans, and there has been one that looked at the extension of Cherry Lane and because of the wetlands west of me and between me and Cherry Lane, it became more difficult. At one point in time, it did look like Cherry Lane was coming through. And then that all fell apart during the ensuing process, from my understanding. So, that's kinda why I made my outburst. During the TIF meeting Monday night, it was stated that these buildings were not gonna be, be spec buildings, that they were going to be build-to-suit buildings. And I know the marketplace takes prevalence, takes preference, but I just wonder how much flexibility there's going to be in the size of these buildings, if they are definitely spec buildings. I mean, we have one on the north side of 38, just west of Couch, that has been empty since it was built, and it's almost a year now. I've been told there is a tenant for it, but there's been no build-out on that. And that one is not 60 feet tall, but it is darn close to the road, and I am shocked that that was allowed to be built so close to 38 on a triangular piece of property. It just, it was a shock when that bugger went up. My other curiosity is drainage. So, because I'm very familiar with the water that is in this area, the pond that is in the upper right is already built and retaining water. We have stormwater drainage on the left side, on the west side of building three, I don't know where that's going to drain. Currently, the majority of this water, until the drain tiles got broken, travel into a channel, a ditch on my property, into a pond, into a drainage goes under the bridge and into the fen on the north side of Cougar Stadium, then into the river. So, this all becomes somewhat part of Waters of the America, believe it or not. So I don't know where these guys are draining. I don't, I get confused between detention and retention ponds, and that stormwater, stormwater drainage that is on the west side of building three, I'd love to know where that goes. As far as access to the tracks, believe me, you can't climb on those tracks unless you're crazy. I also would like to know what the buffering is planning on realistically, that building three there and the potential for building four or the, the other four at the bottom, what's going to be there? And the exterior lighting. When we talk about green space and talk about the future of flora and fauna and animals and the rest of it, the buildings in West Chicago that are in the DuPage County Park, they all have downlights, and they have downlights on all four sides. I don't know why, I don't what, know what the need is unless somebody's gonna be drilling a hole on the backside of a building. I'm just curious why that is a standard plan, because it doesn't make sense to have that much light all the time. Granted, they are downlights, they aren't uplights, but I just sit there and look at it and go, why? Why do we need all that light? I echo the statement about the wetlands and the woods, half the woods that we used to have. There is no access for anybody from this side of the park to those woods or those wetlands. I understand the wetlands will be improved. When Gerard Keating had the property, he cut the entire top-down of the wetlands. That was what he was allowed to do. MIF bought it after that. And so, the wetlands really got ruined then, to a great deal. Doesn't stop the coyotes, but it, I, I don't know what improving wetlands means, that would be an interesting thing to find out. But the water, how the water's gonna go, there's, at this point in time, you have a watershed that is all flowing west. And I'm just curious how the water management is going to be on this property. And I think we've all seen with our lovely river, that water manage, management becomes a huge deal. And so, I just think it's, it's something that we should ask more questions about. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Mozahn, I think it is? Not sound?
Yes, it's Mozahn.
You're not gonna speak? I got that wrong, right? This one, Rick Griffin?
Eric.
Yes, you're good. Brian Johnson? Engineer, sorry. Kathleen, Kathleen?
Rocket.
Four, four-fifty-nine North First Street, Geneva? Nope.
That was the first one.
Oh, sorry, okay. Thank you. Azur?
Azure.
Azure, God, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Azure Hill, six-twenty-three Lexington Drive, Geneva. And I just wanna say that I appreciate that the people behind me to my left, they're here to make the most money possible for their client, but they're not our neighbors, they're not from our community. And in fact, I really am not sure that they're interested in being a part of our community as they have already ignored the pleas from the residents to save the 300-year oaks. So I'm not sure that they're as invested in being good neighbors as they say they are tonight. In fact, the attorney, the attorney himself said tonight that the buildings are gonna be here for a very long time. He said that. And so the decisions that planning and zoning make, those are decisions that we have to live with for a very long time. We only have one chance to get this right. Failure to get this right means that Geneva could end up looking like Elk Grove Village to the west of O'Hare. And it's pretty sad if you've driven through there, it's filthy, it's a canyon, as Dave had said, it's, it's sad. People come to Geneva because of our charm, and not getting this right, this could be a stain, not getting this industrial park development correct, and I'm not opposed to an industrial park development, I think that is a good use for that space, but not doing it correctly, that could be a stain in our community. And I just want us to think about the long-term ramifications of the decisions that, that planning and zoning make, and hope that you guys will listen to the voices of the residents. Thank you.
Phil?
Passo.
Passo? I think?
Oh, there you go.
Please, come forward.
So, H.
Yes, please come forward.
Thank you. I appreciate the time tonight, and I appreciate all the comments that have been made, a lot of well-thought comments that have been made tonight certainly. This is a, you know, certainly a major, major project, and I know it's consistent with the, the history of the city's comprehensive plan. But I'm, I'm sorry, I'm twelve-twenty-four Whitfield Drive, I'm about two and a half, three blocks from the intersection of Kirk and 38, so a major concern for us is, is the traffic impacts. I know there's been studies done of traffic projections, et cetera, but clearly, already we've seen impacts at Kirk and 38 from the, you know, the development at the DuPage Business Park down the road and some other warehousing in the area. And, and so there are already significant traffic impacts we're seeing in, in that intersection and up and down Route 38 in that area. And so this, the concern obviously here is, is with this project of the size that, that, you know, the enhancement of those impacts over time, I know there's projections out to 2040, which I saw on the plan, and it does show a significant increase of traffic in the area. And some of that, of course, will be abated by the extension of Couch Road, which is certainly a good thing and also consistent with the, with the long-term plan of the city. But it's, it's something, it's a really major project, and it's, it's a major consideration, I think, is, you know, the increased traffic, particularly in the area. So, I, I guess my suggestion would be that, I think that ultimately if this project is approved, approved by the plant commission, that there, there would be a recommendation for an independent traffic study, not just accepting what the developer has presented, but that there'd be an independent traffic study commissioned by the city and paid for, you know, by the developer. I think that's very important, that we get, you know, this, this issue analyzed independently. Secondly, and, and I guess I should say, I'm a retired administrator of the city of Geneva, I retired in 2005, so I do have some context here, but the, the developers presented a plan and they, and they come, come across as this big Oprah well-funded outfit, and talking about all the improvements they're gonna make on the site, and a lot of those are very nice, and 20 million investment in the infrastructure. But at the same time, and, and I wasn't able to attend the meeting Monday night with the, you know, with the city and the TIF district, but I think it's important since they're trying to embellish their position here, that we, we do recognize that they're asking up to 185 million from the city in a, in the form of a TIF district. And if you look at the city's comprehensive plan historically, I think we've always thought that this development in the east, these business parks, industrial development, would enhance the tax base particularly for the school district. And when you put a, a TIF district out there which may last 23 years before it, you know, finally pays off its debts, and that's, that's the, that's the scenario where it's successful. And it was pointed out earlier, if it's not successful, that's even a more dire projection is, you know, how does the city back that up? So that's a, that's an important question, but I think, you know, you know, the school district and other districts, you know, parks, the library, et cetera, you know, and the TIF district may not see any money from this project till, you know, out to 23 years. And, and that's really not consistent with, with what the city's planning was in the comprehensive plan. Again, it was to balance out the tax base with the large amount of residential development we've had in the city, to, you know, this industrial development to the east would, would balance that off with, with increased funding for the schools and parks and libraries. So, those are my comments, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, so that is everybody on the list.
I couldn't get my name on there.
Oh, please come forward, I'm going to allow other folks that have not signed up to speak.
So, my name's Rose Vigliano, I'm here on behalf of my parents, Dorothy and Victor. They own the land that's contiguous to the wetland and I believe Lot Four. The original southeast master planned called for a through road connecting Couch and Kirk. I'm, I'm not talking about Cherry Lane, I believe that there was another one. Right now, my parents' property is landlocked, and this through road gave them access to their property. So we would just ask that these plans be adjusted for that road to come through, and my parents to have access via that road. That's it?
That's it? All right, thank you.
That's short and sweet, last one.
Well, AV, we'll see. Okay, anyone else here wishing to speak on this matter? Anyone else wish to give testimony? Okay, doesn't appear we're done. Focus speaking. Applicant, it's time to respond.
All right, um, maybe we'll try to do this by discipline here, we'll have civil engineer, dress engineering questions and so forth. But first, Justin, do you wanna talk about the expected tenant mix for this project? And this, this is, this is not a build-to-suit project.
Correct. Yeah, this is not a build-to-suit project, but we fully expect by the time we're done here, multiple lots will be a, there will be at least one build-to-suit, if not more. So yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit, I mean, good questions about the uses and the makeup of the buildings. So, the first thing I wanna point out is, we can convert any warehouse-designed building to a state-of-the-art manufacturing building. We cannot convert a manufacturing building to any building that has warehousing. Every single manufacturer that has a building in the state of Illinois has a warehousing component to their building, might be 5%, might be 10%, might be 50%. So the buildings that are all designed here that you see on paper are all designed for maximum flexibility. We fully expect, we, we love the fact that there's a hardy manufacturing base here, we love the fact that manufacturing is back really stronger than ever in Chicagoland with the reshoring, with the labor base that's here. I can tell you almost 50% of our tenants on spec buildings in the last two years have been manufacturers, big-name manufacturers. Two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand square foot spec building we built in Palatine, SNC Electric came in and converted that, leased it for long-term and converted that to manufacturing for many years to come. Hundred-million-dollar food plant, leased another spec building of ours in Melrose Park. They're making a hundred-million-dollar investment, 150-plus employees on a state-of-the-art food production plant. Even a building in Joliet, Joliet, the land of multiple intermodals. We designed this building with extra trailer parking, extra amenities geared towards more of a transportation-oriented tenant. What happens? We leased half the building to a manufacturer that moved out of Chicagoland. So, we've probably never had a larger percentage of manufacturing tenants lease our buildings than we've seen in the last two, three years, and that's a testament to, you know, the, what's happening with manufacturing here in Chicagoland, and we fully expect that to continue. We cannot design a, a spec manufacturing building, we can only design a spec building that works for every use that's possible, and like I said, to open every, every warehousing building can be converted to manufacturing, but it can't go, it can't go the other way. I guess in addition, we are currently doing a build-to-suit project right now for, for another manufacturer on a 200,000-square-foot building in the Brewster Creek Business Park in Bartlett. So, hopefully this can leave some of the, alleviate some of the questions, and I think everybody can feel that, you know, manufacturing is alive and well, we fully expect to have manufacturing uses in here as well as small companies, mid-sized companies, large companies. Of course, there's going to be a warehousing component, but the, the designs that you see in the buildings are all designed to give maximum flexibility and a multitude of uses in the, in the years to come.
Thanks. I know there was a question about the, the right-of-way width and for the Couch Road extension and some of the set deviation, zoning deviations that are being sought. I mean, this is a planned unit development, and of course, the tweaking the, the bulk requirements that are otherwise applicable in the zoning ordinance is sort of part and parcel of what a PUD is. The large portion of the property that's taken up by the conservation area sort of dictates that other portions of the, the project will require those deviations. But I would, I guess I would like to ask, who's best, Matt, Brian, to talk about the hundred?
Hundred-foot width for the Couch Road extension, is that?
Yeah, a hundred-foot right-of-way. Yeah, thanks, Matt. So, to kind of continue on the conversation with regards to some of the deviations and setbacks, you know, the initial approach to, to laying out these buildings, you know, there are multiple, multiple iterations. Believe me, this is not my first time drafting this, I've probably done 150 of these, no kidding. And the reason why we're requesting the deviations, we really want- And the reason why we're requesting the deviations, we really want to cluster the buildings in a fashion that allowed for the enhancement of the open space. There is that large wetland to the west. Obviously, we wanted to go through and enhance it even further, there's stormwater ponds, there's open space. You know, we really didn't want to add a lot more additional green space in and around the building that was going to end up being, let's be honest, turf grass at the end of the day, when we could have native vegetation throughout and enhance this wetland. With regards to Couch Road specifically, Couch Road is going to be a three-lane road, it's going to be one in each direction with a multiple turn lane throughout the middle. And through all the multiple agencies, we've worked with A dot, K dot, the local municipalities, this is the accepted section that they would like to see based on multiple different traffic studies done by multiple different agencies. With regards to the right-of-way, you know, the original development proposed a 66-foot right-of-way. Right now, it's 100-foot. And what that means is, the 36-foot road doesn't change. So really what happens is, the amount of green space, if you will, got larger. So when we talk about different setbacks, we're talking about, well, if you really start to look at from where that building or parking lot is to the curb, it's approximately the same. The only difference is, that right-of-way got larger, and what we put in that right-of-way was more landscaping, we put a bike path, and we added a lot of utilities and infrastructure that was easily more accessible for maintenance departments, public works departments and stuff like that, instead of putting them in easements on private property. So therefore, the request for the deviation and setback came through.
While you're up here, there was a question about where the drainage goes. I believe this property is in at least two watersheds.
Correct, so, um, that was a great question. Right through here, there is the watershed divide. It almost kind of goes like this. All of this water on the west goes this way. All the area on the east goes this way. So us as engineers, we want to honor those watersheds. I don't want to send more water to the west than actually goes there, and I don't want to send any more land or area to the east that actually goes there. So in analyzing this portion, there's a significant amount of off-site area to the west that drains down through the wetland, that comes through the wetland, goes north, gets somewhat channelized, and then eventually crosses the property here. There is a large drain tile there as well, and then there is some surface flow that starts to erode there occasionally right now, as a result of the agricultural reus. When the proposed development happens, there's this stormwater pond, this stormwater pond, and this stormwater pond are here to mitigate the added impervious area as a result of the development to the north. So what will happen is, at, just like in the existing conditions, this water will get routed through these stormwater management facilities. They'll have native bottom vegetation, so it's going to promote infiltration, there'll be some water quality components as well, and then it'll exit or discharge in a very similar location as it currently does right now. I think there's one more with regards to lighting, you know. Lighting's always extremely important in these industrial parks, you know, one for security, but there's light sensitivity, there's light pollution, that's also a lot of times discussed, you know, these buildings are going to have cutoff shields where appropriate, and then what we do is, we want to meet the minimum standard as laid out by the municipality. We don't want to add any more light that's already required, so what we do is, we get, hit the minimum standards as required, and we go from there. So, I think that's all I had on my.
Scott, if you want to address, there's a couple of questions, one was, what does it mean to, how do you enhance a wetland? What does it mean to enhance a wetland?
That's a great question.
Hey guys, just if you would, please just speak into the mic, so, because it is being broadcast, so.
Hopefully you can hear me okay. So yeah, there are a few questions that I had noted here, we'll start with, with your question, and I think a little background is, is needed and required for this discussion. So, the conservancy area that you see, even, you know, as the existing condition is today, there are multiple isolated wetlands on the site. There is this large complex that is half-wetland now, will be more wetland in the future as part of the enhancement. But a jurisdictional determination from the Corps of Engineers, who is the only federal agency you can make a ruling on the jurisdiction of wetlands on a site, was conducted early in the process. That is what led us ultimately to submit, prepare, and obtain the Corps of Engineers permit that we needed for this project. Ultimately, it also lent, was, was needed for the Kane County wetland permit that we've received. None of those permits would have been received without a plan for what we were going to do to enhance not only the wetland, but to natively, native plant, the detention basins, and enhance the woodland. So what you see here is documented on a step-by-step basis as far as what is needed in order to meet the conditions, not only of both the core permit that was issued, but also the Kane County stormwater permit. There are performance standards that need to be met. There are activities of management and monitoring that need to be met on an annual basis. Controlled burns, removal of invasive species such as buckthorn, honeysuckle, the planting of better-quality species, sedge meadow species, emergent plant species. Those were all taken into consideration and listed by species and activities to be done, performance standards to be met. And those negotiations were had with both the federal government, the Corps of Engineers, and Kane County. And ultimately, we would not have received our permit approvals without that. So there is a, activities to happen basically over time, they've already started, we've done a controlled burn in part of the conservancy area, we've removed buckthorn, we're doing species-specific weed control, et cetera. All in the end, we need to get performance standards approved by the regulatory agencies when, when all the activities are complete. There were some questions as it related to the barn that was on site, as well as the paleo artifacts. So as part of the Corps of Engineers permitting process, they call it one door to the core, and through that review process, the Corps of Engineers' project manager, whomever is assigned, coordinates with the State Historic Preservation Office, that is SHIPO. As part of our Corps of Engineers permit, the barn was brought up, there was coordination between SHIPO, the Corps of Engineers, V3 as the consultant, as well as the applicant. Ultimately, SHIPO and the applicant and V3 worked together in order to meet SHIPO's requirements for mitigation to be able to raise that barn. It involved architectural renderings being prepared, and those are stored in the Library of Congress, I believe, and can be accessed by the public for review. The, the way that the SHIPO mitigates a historic barn such as that through the process, and ultimately ending up in a mitigation agreement, the architectural renderings could be gathered so that anyone could go and recreate that exact barn as it was in the measurement, size, and style that it was. So that was a contingent part of our core permit being issued. So we went through the SHIPO process for the barn, and it wasn't until that was concluded that the Corps of Engineers issued our permit. We also did a Phase 1 archaeological investigation through SHIPO for the site, we actually received sign-off early, and that was part of our Corps of Engineers permit. And then, I guess a little bit out of the blue, in October-ish of 2023, we received a letter from the SHIPO stating that they would like a Phase 2 archaeological study for a particular area. It was brought to our attention that a collector who has not been named, had, had found an artifact in an area on the property. So we coordinated with the SHIPO again, we coordinated with our archaeologist who performs Phase 1 and Phase 2 archaeological investigations. And the applicant took the initiative to get that done. We submitted for the findings from our archaeologist to the SHIPO, and on November 15, 2023, we received a sign-off letter saying that all, everything is clear, and they have no other questions or concerns, so that was taken care of. Were there any others that I'm missing, Matt?
I think that was everything in your category.
Great.
There was a question about what's, what would be stored outside, who's the best person to answer that?
If you all, when, even when you're asking questions, if you could speak into the mic, just because they're, thank you.
Who's the best person to answer the question, what could be stored outside?
Yeah, in regards to potential outside storage, or what could be stored outside, this is a very minority chance type item. At the end of the day, to keep these buildings leased, to keep them functioning in the long term, we've, we've got to be able to lease and, and secure a vast array of occupants. And there's a, a, a small chance that we would have something that has an outside storage component, and what that would typically be, first of all, any outside storage always would be done in the truck courts, that's where we have the heavy-duty asphalt, or we have concrete, that's part of why we propose and are okay with screening them, the way that we proposed, ultimately that's what we need to do to keep up our Class A image, we wouldn't allow anything that's of, of too much height, or, or for instance, you know, 20-foot-tall pallets or something out there, even if the city wanted that, because that doesn't work with the Class A nature of our, of our financing sources and, and how we work, but, you know, an example of a use, it, it could be a, a roofing supply company that could have roofing or building materials that would be in a, a small component in the loading dock areas, you know, much in the same fashion that another user may have, trucks parked in the truck dock. That's just an example of one of the options that could be there for, for, on the outside storage side. Again, it could be, a lot of people look at, at straight trucks, it could be some sort of local last-mile delivery service, and it could be 10 different smaller straight trucks that are parked, again, segregated in that area, and if you take a look at our plan, all of the truck dock areas are either, none of them are, are facing the main Couch Road, they're either, you know, some sort of side view, side configuration, or they're in the, in the rear yard. But ultimately, that request is in there just to have some flexibility if that particular type of use comes along, but it's, it's, it's more of a minority type of scenario in the marketplace to secure that type of user.
Mr. Chairman, there was also a question about, or a suggestion to do an independent traffic study. I mean, the purpose of a traffic study would be to identify what road improvements would be necessary to support this project that is already designated in the City's Comprehensive Plan. And a, a traffic study was done already, and it was independent, we did not commission it. And it, it called for this Couch Road extension, which we are building as part of our project. I think that answers all of the questions that were directed to the applicant.
I believe so, I think there was some talk about public access to the wetlands.
Oh, oh, to the wetlands?
I mean, I don't know if that was a consideration, I haven't heard anything spoken about that.
So the, the conservation area is intended to be a passive recreational area, it is not intended to be an active recreational area. And we are not planning to, to have general public access, physical public access, to the grounds, correct.
Is there any way to get back there? Sidewalks, something?
Well, Couch will be a public right-of-way, the Cherry Lane extension will be a public right-of-way, so I guess.
So there's routes, do you could at least get here at?
Yes.
It's not just sitting?
So right now, we're not proposing to.
If you could just state, state your name, just because, otherwise, so people know that.
This is Scott Breaka with V3 speaking. So it's regulated by the Corps of Engineers, okay? And to put a sidewalk, boardwalk, access to the west side of it is going to require, you know, additional permitting, additional mitigation. The thought at this time is to hopefully have, you know, access on the east side, and maybe some picnic tables for users of the buildings, workers, et cetera. But at this time, we do not have public access, and for good reason. There are going to be some species in there that we want to keep contained, there are people who will come and, you know, maybe try to harvest species. We're hoping that there'll be additional, you know, birds and amphibians taking, taking refuge and habitat here. So we're trying to limit the access to the other side of the wetland.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, thank you. Any, okay.
What are the things you did address was any?
Wait, 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 sorry. No, I mean, I think he addressed everything, and that was on my list.
No, the Couch Road extension to Kirk Road. How are they gonna make that happen? So the original southeast master plan called for that?
Could you please come forward and identify yourself?
James Albright, speaking on behalf of Dorothy and Victor Vigliano, whose land is contiguous to the MIF project. Their project does not currently call for the road that connects the Couch Road extension to Kirk Road, which is land-locking the Vigliano's property, the original southeast master plan had called for that, so the Viglianos had asked that you guys had dedicate an area where they could potentially put the road in. We've actually been talking to Mark Sorrentino and also Austin Dempsey, and we're all in agreement.
I don't know who those gentlemen are.
Oh, Batavia Enterprises, and then the guy to the South Geneva Oaks. And we've been talking about getting the through road put in there, and we'd like to work with the MIF guys to make that happen, and we've extended, we've actually reached out to you guys to make that happen, and it, it hasn't happened, so us three have been talking about it, and we'd like to include them in the conversation, and we'd like to get the through road from the Couch Road extension over to Kirk Road, and we'd like to have the land dedicated to do so. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, so could you guys address that for the Viglianos, please?
We're gonna address it now.
Yeah, I mean, we worked on this plan for a while, all I can tell you is that right now, there is no access to that area, this plan has been in front of the city for many years, we've gone through it a, a lot, and at, at the end of the day, to get the economics to work, to get the buildings, to get the layouts that we had looked at, and to get what we're looking at there in the southwest, there was never any contemplation about necessarily that road being mandated to, to go through to open up the west area, because it's not served now.
I think he made his point, so.
But in order to develop the product, the, the property to the highest and best use case, we need the through road as STEM originally called for, and that's the major issue here, is they're not including the through road to develop the other areas to the highest and best use case, which in consideration could consider a, to be what is called a spite strip, I guess? I'm really familiar with that, but that's what somebody had told me. So I'm just trying to avoid that and trying to create the highest and best use case for the area.
Well, we're gonna address it, because it's part of the plan, so we're gonna have to talk about it, so.
It's not a spiteful act to develop your, your land in the way that best suits your project, that's what we're doing. There's no ill will or intention to harm anybody else.
Yes, Rebecca?
Someone brought up a point about the height, the 60-foot, is this, I don't know if this is the right?
This, yeah, I mean, the applicant would respond to that question.
Yep, some of the things that you were asking for, the height of the building, 60-foot instead of 50-foot, and the signs, and if you could speak to some of those questions?
Hi, Jeremy, with MWI Properties. So in regards to the building height. So in regards to the building height, most of the buildings probably won't meet that 60-foot requirement. And second off, the height of the pre-cast, it's not necessarily to the height of the roof, the pre-cast has a parapet that's above that. So a lot of our buildings, like the million-square footer or the 875,000-square footer, most of those tenants require 40-foot clear building. On top of that, you have a, you know, joists heights and then the pitch of the roof can extend that building, that height of that roof all the way to 50 feet, and then we have that parapet. And that's why we got that additional height all the way up to the top of pre-cast, not necessarily to the roof line there.
So the, I just can't think of the right word, so the ordinance is, the 50-foot is all of that included in the 50-foot, not just to the height of the building?
It would be to the top of the structure.
Which would be, and that would be 50 feet, that's the current?
That's the, yeah, that's the I-1 zoning requirement.
Okay.
Right.
And then, I think there was a question about the, you know, the size of the signs and being so huge, and is that...
Right, so what they're referring to is our park entrance signs. So similar to our adjacent neighbor, the DuPage Business Park, it's a feature to the Business Park, which if you take a look at their signage, you know, 50, 500 square feet is relatively equivalent to what we're asking for as well. And as far as the building signs, you know, we have these buildings that necessarily 40 square feet of signage you won't be able to see and a lot of the tenants kind of require that. Technically, more of a standard throughout the other municipalities as well, that signage. And we also did, you know, mimic, very similar to the Hillwood property to the north of us, their signage requirements as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
John?
So to piggyback on Rebecca, to staff, does this approximate the Hillwood signage requirements for their PUD?
I believe it's fairly similar. I don't have the specifications on hand, but I think from our perspective, at least for the park entrance signage...
Okay.
Yeah, I know that the 300 square feet per building is consistent with the Geneva Business Park to the north.
Okay. Couple other points, in no particular order of importance, but I find myself thinking, and if you guys have been around Geneva much, you know that we are an outdoor-oriented community with parks and paths and everything that residents can enjoy, Peck Farm Park and the like. This 40-acre or at a minimum 28 contiguous acres for the conservancy would be an attractive access point for folks to walk, whether it's a railed boardwalk or something that people couldn't pick indigenous plants and walk away with them, but they could enjoy the outside. How much work would it be, how much cost would it be in relation to a $250 million total budget to try to incorporate some form of access in small parking lot to allow residents to access that? I mean, I'm just, I don't know how the, I mean, you guys are trying to make an economic decision here, but it's also an amenity on our southeast corner, and I just like to hear you address that. Does it make sense to take some time and think about that, or do we have to make a decision tonight on whether that's going to be a passive or an active area? And I guess, coupling on that, I would also say that if you had access above building four or lot four, that might also address some of the concerns of the neighbor to the west as far as access. If there was, even if it was a single-lane road or a two-lane road that had less right-of-way, that might allow also some transfer to the west property.
You have the bike path running through there, right? So they're gonna extend the bikes down there, so they're coming down through...
No, I'm talking about east-west.
Yeah, I know, but they're, I mean, they do have it coming down, so people will be coming through there, they provide it for that.
Right.
There's a way to get back there. Rebecca, did you have something you wanted to add on that?
I just, my feeling is that that's not really the function of that feature, to be, and I don't know if you can speak to that a little bit more, but that's my, I feel like that's my understanding of what...
The reasons that the Army Corps protects waters of the United States, I don't think is to provide active recreational opportunities for people. It's to provide for cleaner water, for bird sanctuaries, wildlife sanctuaries. So I, we can inquire whether it's possible to amend this permit, but I just don't, I don't think it would be likely to be approved.
And I'm not saying that it has to be.
Okay.
But I'm saying, have you thought about it and why, what are the reasons it's not an active, versus, because you have a choice?
Oh yeah, we have thought about it and in formulating this conservation easement with the Conservation Foundation, it was one of the issues we discussed internally as to whether we wanted to reserve the right to build a public recreational trail. And we concluded that that's really not the purpose, the Army Corps' purpose, it's unlikely to get approved. We're not opposed to inquiring further.
Right, right. Regarding the screening, again, with chain-link fence with slats, not the most attractive type of fence, what are alternatives if you weren't allowed to use chain-link with slats? What would be the alternative? I realize, as stated, it would likely not be in a road-facing area of the project, but just curious, what are the alternatives and what else did you consider? And what would the incremental cost be? I mean, if that's, you know, it's obviously a cost decision, chain-link is pretty easy to put up, so...
I guess our team is saying, you know, an alternative could be a solid PVC fence. I mean, this is such a minority outlier scenario. Again, we don't want any fencing PVC, the best-looking fence, we don't want it really visible from any of the streets, it's not what our tenants want. I mean, this, we pay special attention even when the 1 in 40 tenants that come along and want this, we tend to want to push them towards the back of a building, we tend to want to put them in an area where we don't have that. But I guess it sounds like another alternative would be some sort of solid PVC fence to screen it. But again, this is a very minority scenario, we're quite particular, just recently in our Liberty development, we had a tenant inquire about an outside storage type use and we just passed, and it just doesn't make sense. We don't ever, it would just be poor management for ourselves as a developer, our investors to, you know, for instance, do a lead tenant deal that becomes such a negative that then, you know, we can't lease up the rest of the building. So we put a lot of thought into that and we just put that in the request, so we have the flexibility in a minority scenario to be able to do something like that.
And what I'm hearing is, in particular, say, on lot two, if somebody was to come on the two southernmost buildings in your scenario one, you might then guide them to having their storage area to the west away from the street...
Precisely.
So that that's not right up against Couts Road.
Yeah, and if you look, I mean, again, similar deal, think about the building midway through the park on the east side, all of the loading areas really protected from the street by the building, so it's all very much shielded from view on the Couts Road side. We want Couts Road to function as a great, you know, through boulevard street to showcase the Business Park and to obviously improve and help local and regional transportation.
And correct me if I'm wrong, staff, as and when each building comes forth for approval, we will have the opportunity to ask questions like, where will the outside storage be located on this approved site?
Exactly, and of course, you ultimately approve every tenant and every business license that goes along with it and what they're doing and how they're doing it. So yeah, all those sort of scenarios come along, we look at it more as a case-by-case basis as buildings and occupants are secured.
Thank you.
Yes, Mike? Just a question regarding that screening, and I realize it's maybe a minor point. What is the chain-link fence with slats in alternative two? What would the city require for permitted outdoor screening?
I can try to look it up and get back to you.
We don't have specific requirements for outdoor screening, just a solid screen that needs to be provided.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir?
I'd just like to clarify a case in one of the developers' comments on the traffic study. Of course, I think a second opinion is always justified, particularly with a project of this magnitude, but it was stated that, you know, traffic study was done and I did see the traffic projections in the study, but who contracted for that study and who paid for it?
I believe it was the city of Geneva and KDOT, but if somebody on the city staff wants to correct me.
So the city has a third-party consultant, in this case, we use WVK, and the payment for that cost came out of your deposit for these applications.
All right, we did not control the...
You did not, no. The city selected the consultant.
Yes, ma'am. I don't believe you've spoken before, please identify yourself. Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Doris Lepak, and I just want you to explain it to me about Cherry Lane. That's the only question I have.
Ma'am, please address me.
What can we, what can...
Ma'am, please address me.
Can you explain it to me about Cherry Lane? You just said something about Cherry Lane, so I want to know what you mean by that.
Excuse me, this is Mag Bussi again.
Please identify yourself again, so that, for the record.
I did, this is Mag Bussi again. The attorney for MIF mentioned the Cherry Lane extension, and to my understanding, that wasn't, that's not going to happen. So I'm just curious if it is in their plans that they've seen about the southern master plan, if Cherry Lane is going to be extended to this development?
Okay, interested.
So, our plat of subdivision dedicates Cherry Lane all the way to the western boundary of our property. What the city does with it beyond there is the city's decision. So we've been, we were asked to make that dedication and we'll do it and we'll, you know, we'll build it on our property. So I think the Cherry Lane discussion is more of a regional discussion. We, all we can do is dedicate and build on our property.
Did we build that, Matt, at the time we built that building?
Yes.
If they wanted to come sooner, it's dedicated to that.
There, there, there's some other discussions about limitations on whether Cherry Lane can be extended, those are obviously beyond our control.
Right, Matt, you want to carry it?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I mean, essentially repeat what you said, it's, they are providing what they can on their property. Any development outside of that and other parcels is subject to what happens.
Further discussion, the city will be involved in...
Yes.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
So just to note, the traffic study is from 2018, so has traffic increased or decreased since then?
On what?
The traffic study on the MIF project. I pulled up when it was done and it says 2018. The traffic study was done in 2018 for this project that they're doing in 2024.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have an answer to that or have any idea?
Do you think that would be wise to get a new traffic study based on the one that was done in 18? Do you think this traffic has changed since then, in your opinions? Is it 2024 or...? Because it says on your website, 2018. So I just didn't know if it was relevant to get a new traffic study based on the fact that it was done in 2018 and it's 2024 now.
Okay, all right, thank you. No?
As you guys are well aware, this project's been going on for many, many years, and when initially done, the traffic study was done in 2018, it does have projections out to 2040. And as these buildings start to get developed, the traffic study will continue to be amended, certainly to support the cul-de-sac and then obviously the future connection to Roosevelt Road as well.
Brian, when you said the traffic study will continue to be amended with each development application, in some cases, could it be updated?
Oh, well, I should say, it should be, it will be updated with each development.
We should see some updates.
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, any other additional questions, comments from commissioners at this time?
I will comment on one of the variances, the 90% coverage. I felt that the presence of the 28-acre Nate Conservancy area was a sufficient mitigation of that request for variation from the 80, so...
No, we're still in public hearing. Yeah. Okay, so, public hearing, so, no? Turn it up?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Saka, Sluka. Moved and seconded. Anna, please call a roll.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Sluka?
Sluka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Okay.
Comments?
Discussion time.
Discussion time.
And that's probably where, more appropriately, where my comment on the variation should have gone, is that I find that a meaningful mitigant, having open area in the conservancy area to the 90% request.
Meaningful.
Meaningful.
Yes.
Yes, Michael?
On that topic, some others, but I agree with that, and, you know, when you look at, especially in a planned unit development, you can't look at all, sometimes these things in a vacuum. So when you look at the overall coverage of the site, and I don't remember the percent, but it's closer to 50% than the 90%, so, you know, that number's a little bit misleading. That's the coverage in the area where the buildings are built, but overall, I think it more than offsets that. And I think some of the other standards, they requested the height of the buildings, the setbacks, you know, again, they play to the flexibility and the ability for the project to be successful. You know, there was a, one of the comments was that we don't know what's going to be built. But by having that flexibility, it also avoids one of the other comments of the potential white elephants, I think that was referenced. So, you know, I think it's a well-designed project at this point, and, you know, I think they've addressed everything, you know, necessary, it certainly matches the, is in alignment with the comprehensive plan. Again, and so I think that I would be in favor.
I like the different sizes of the buildings, I think it could appeal to a broader range of tenants, as opposed to some of the projects that we've seen that are so large, it's, you know, you can't think of who might fill them. I'm a little bit concerned about the 60-feet, because I do feel like, you know, when you get into these, whichever option you're looking at, you know, that it's just, you're gonna be in a parking lot, it's just gonna be building, but I hope that they wouldn't all be at the 60-feet, especially the ones that are closest to the conservancy.
I echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioners. I like the nimbleness of the design, which allows these guys to be competitive in a market that's driven largely by spec development, industrial users... by spec development. Industrial users typically need space tomorrow. They can't wait for a development cycle for a particular project. So, and, and I think as far as the 60-foot height to the top of the parapet or the top of the exterior wall, in either scenario, there's a series of smaller buildings on each side of Couts. It's hard to imagine that 150,000 square foot building, 120,000 square foot building will, will be that high. You'll see that height in one of the warehouse buildings, maybe in the, in scenario one, lot four, and lots, and lot, and lot three. But I doubt you'll see that kind of height. So that, that is, is, I think the, just the nature of the design of, of where you're going to build is going to help mitigate having all 60 feet in a, in a, in a long, protracted canyon, so to speak.
Look, I can give you just a little more color on that.
Sir, sir, we, sir, we stopped the hearing, so you can't really comment. We're deliberating. Yeah, I agree, John. I think also the right-of-way is 100 feet, so it's unillating. It's not a straight shot road, so there's a bike path there. There's other mitigating factors. I'll break the scale down a little bit, so you won't feel if the building, you know, one or two of the, I, I doubt all of them would be 60. It'd be very, very unusual that would happen. So it'll break the scale down enough that it'll be fine.
And I take good comfort knowing that whether it's eight buildings, 12 buildings, nine buildings, we're gonna, we're gonna see each building, and we're gonna be able to comment on its, its physical contribution.
Yeah.
As well as others to the, to the land use here.
And how it all links up, how it works together, so. Anything else, John?
I don't.
Good. Rebecca, you good? Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a zoning map amendment upon annexations from RR Rural Single Family Residential to I-1 Light Industrial, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report for the subject property located generally south of the intersection of Illinois 38 and Couts Road, south to Fabian Parkway.
Second, Slavka. Moved and seconded. Anna, please call a roll.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Slavka?
Slavka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, a motion for a preliminary planned unit development PUD approval for the MIF Geneva Park with the, with the tailored development standards as listed in detail on pages two and three of the staff report, and further subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Slavka, second. Moved and seconded. Anna?
Mead?
Aye. Mead, aye.
Slavka?
Slavka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for approval of a preliminary final plat of subdivision for the MIF Geneva Development, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Slavka, second. Moved and seconded. Anna, call the roll, please.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Slavka?
Slavka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye. All right. Matt, next steps?
Okay. I mean, next steps will be a city council meeting. We don't have a date as of right now. We're going to continue to work with the applicant on the annexation agreement. Once that has been established, we will essentially, you know, line up that city council date.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating. It was a very good hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that's weird. That's fine. Don't worry about it.
We'd rather have you.
You'd rather say something?
Yeah, we'd rather have you say something than not.
Because sometimes I mess.
No, no, no.
No, no, you were right.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Yeah. All right, guys. We got one more item on our agenda. It's a technical thing, but if you would please leave us the room. It's not that bad outside. You could actually carry on the conversations.
Jess, you want?
Some days, they don't listen to me now because it's over. So like, yeah. Let them give them a minute. Thank you, gentlemen. Folks, please, we need the room. We have one more item on our agenda. Please carry on your conversations outside the building.
Or a return to your seats quietly.
All right. All right. Thank you.
See you, Phil.
All right. Matt, what do we get? Oh, I'm sorry. Before Matt, I was visiting. So I got public comment, so.
Hey, Phil, good to see you, man. You look great.
Still all right. Still on the side, though, you know.
That's right.
Bye. Okay. I'm going to just read this. I don't know if anybody's still here. We still, John's still here, so. Public comment. When recognized by the chair, please proceed to the podium and state your name for the record and provide your public comments. Understand that you're time to be heard by the public body, and it's time to listen. No debate or discussion will follow. So if anyone wants to distress John, if you want to talk to us or whatever. We're here to listen, but apparently no one wants to talk to us. So that's fine. All right. Matt, go ahead.
All right. I'll talk to you.
Yep.
Just a couple items for me. First, our, our last meeting, we had the 1:30 South Harrison variation. That's going to go before council next week. So I'll have an update for you guys at our next meeting.
Okay.
Speaking of the next meeting, we got scheduled for April 25th. We have the 302 River PUD project coming. I will try my best to get that staff report and pack it out to you guys as soon as possible. It's a fairly large project. It's about 126 total units, mix of apartments and townhomes. So we expect probably a, you know, another good discussion for that, for that project. Last item, I just wanted to say, we also have a proposed cell tower going from Verizon on Randall Road. We have scheduled the balloon test for that next Thursday, April 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Assuming that is completed that date, we'll, we'll move forward with scheduling the public hearing after that. So look forward to, to that meeting as well.
Thanks. Wow.
You ready?
I am ready.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, John.